Community Motors West Side, the GM Superstore next to Cinema West. Community Motors of Mason City, we give you more.
All right. Worth meaning to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Well, number one, we have one more thing for me to read off tonight. A good one. We've got Coaches vs. Cancer Day, claiming January 27, 2012. As coaches beat cancer, they may have a bet in here out here. Our proclamation is false. Whereas since over 1.6 million new cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States this year, increased access to quality cancer care, screening and prevention must be a top priority in our community. And whereas more than 1,500 people die from cancer each day, and whereas the number of survivors has increased by about 20% in just six years, and whereas there are more than 11.7 million cancer survivors in America, and whereas the great city of Mason City, Iowa, is an active, productive cancer survivor population. And whereas the Coaches Beat Cancer is a nationwide effort to unite coaches across the country in a common mission to provide help and hope to all people facing cancer. And whereas Coaches Beat Cancer supports the American Cancer Society's lifesaving mission to eliminate cancer as a life-threatening disease. And whereas Coaches Beat Cancer sends a powerful message, together we can win in the fight against cancers. And whereas, on behalf of the people of Mason City, Iowa, I salute the coaches, the cancer initiative, and all those who support it. Now therefore, I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, do hereby proclaim observance of Coaches Beat Cancer Day on Friday, January 27, 2012, in Mason City, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to join and support this endeavor by working pink on January 27. That's in your mouth. Give her a round. All right. Well, number two on the agenda. This presentation, my note that I'm full of work now with Development Corporation regarding economic development activities in the city. And we are pleased to have our very fine Economic Development Director, Executive Director, Mr. Brent Twill, is here to address us to the seat.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be the first to congratulate you on a fine State of the City address. Thank you for that. Council, good evening. Thank you for the time. This, I'm pleased, as Mayor Bookmeyer alluded to, I'm pleased to report that this is my first address, not only to this new council, but as representative of a fully merged and single economic development organization representing a more than 45,000-person demographic in Mason City, Clear Lake, and Saragordo County. The merger that has been referenced, which was approved by the Iowa Secretary of State in late December, is the final product of more than a decade of talks and incremental moves toward formal merger by the three groups, the Mason City Economic Development Corporation, the Clear Lake Economic Development Corporation, and the corridor. As a result of this merger, a number of positive developments I'd like to draw your attention to. The Mason City EDC and Clear Lake EDC have been formally folded into the corridor and have therefore organizationally ceased. The assets and liabilities of all three organizations have been folded legally and formally into the corridor. Several agreements and contracts have been renegotiated and assumed by the corridor. The city of Clear Lake has matched Mason City's action with a three-year funding commitment of its own. And the former Mason City Economic Development Corporation revolving loan fund has become fully regionalized and is now available to qualifying projects throughout the corridor market. Our board of directors remains in place and will transition to a 12-voting, eight ex officio member board effective July 1 of this year. Mayor Bookmeyer, Brent Trout will remain on as ex officios moving forward in their city administrator/mayor positions, as does Councilman Hickey as a voting member. From a process perspective, the city of Mason City will have two voting appointments direct to our board of directors, as will Clear Lake and Saragordo County. The other six members are appointed via a nominating committee. I have provided Mr. Trout a memo outlining the city's appointment schedule just today through 2016, so that you can add to the plan for those appointments. Bottom line is, we've become more functionally streamlined and efficient as a result of the elimination of major redundancies existing within the organization related to the administration, government, the governance of three separate economic development corporations. We feel better positioned to deliver the economic development services you expect and demand as well you should from us moving forward. And so we appreciate your patience with us as we slog through this merger, not only over the last eight months, but truly over the last decade. To get down to business, from a project perspective, I'm pleased to report the corridor feels that we've entered 2012 with a particularly strong project pipeline. The third and fourth quarters of 2011 saw eight project leads advanced by the corridor. These leads represented nearly $258 million in potential capital investment, the retention of 120 existing jobs, and the potential creation of 180 million new jobs. Six of these eight leads remain active as I speak tonight, along with a host of additional projects which have been underway for many months or in varying stages of development. Current projects working include a $10-million, 53-job potential food ingredient company considering citing in Mason City. The project has included incentives and many other discussions and negotiations with the city, county, and state. And I mention that specifically because I have been exceptionally pleased with the level of participation, interest, and cooperation that's happened between the city, Brent and his staff, the county, and the state of Iowa in assembling the packets that we presented to this prospect. And we believe that it places Mason City in particularly strong competitive position for this project. We have been advised that we have been shortlisted with only one other community on this project. A $2-million, 10-job transportation distribution facility in Mason City, which we expect to close as early as this week with an announcement coming shortly thereafter. An $8-million ag sector project we're working, which is considering multiple sites, including Mason City. That is an early-stage project. However, we did conduct site tours just this week with that client. And of course, the $35-million, 58-job Creative Energy Systems project, which has of course consumed a significant amount of corridor bandwidth over the last eight months. With the approval of the zoning board adjustment, company representatives are negotiating a contract draft with the landfill of North Iowa currently, which that landfill board is expected to take up and vote upon during a February 2 special meeting of that group, which was determined during the landfill board's meeting last week. That project continues to move forward and we're pleased with the progress. Closed corridor project since I last addressed this group, or this body, I should say. The Gabrielson Clinic project in Clear Lake, that's an $800,000 project representing the creation of several new high-quality jobs for this market. Ozonics Corporation in Clear Lake, that project could lead to up to 15 new jobs. That represents the attraction of new business to the market area currently that the assembly and manufacture of that product is being done in another state. Mason City Red Power is a $3-million, up to 10-new-job project in the county. Saragordo County, I'd like to recognize as having capitalized on the opportunity that project represents to move toward creating its own tax increment financing district in the surrounding area contiguous to Mason City to assist the county with future development in that area. Those are some brief project notes. A couple of other notes for you. The corridor board of directors has recently conducted its strategic planning meetings for the year. A plan is forthcoming and under review by our executive committee just this week. I look forward to presenting that plan to you at my next quarterly address. Some expected outcomes, in my view, of that plan, which should be a multiple-year plan, will include a reimagined, truly reimagined business retention and expansion program. You've already made say 100 times, 75, 80% of our new jobs come by way of existing industry. We are going to improve our program in that respect, but perhaps more exciting, something I'm more excited about is that we're going to work to develop an innovative strategy to incorporate our attraction component of our efforts, business attraction, new business, marry that with our business retention and expansion strategy in an innovative way, leveraging supply chain relationships in a way that I don't think we've done before in this. You look around the state, you look around the Midwest region of this country, the large projects, the impactful new job, new capital investment projects are occurring almost predominantly as a result of the successful leveraging of significant supply chain relationships within the existing structure. So we're going to work to exploit, if you will, some of those relationships here and find ways to ask appropriate questions and move forward significant results. If I could just add one housekeeping item next Tuesday, 4:30 to 6:30 is our merger achievement reception, and I'd be honored if any of all of you could attend there. And finally, with this new council, I've mentioned to a couple of you. I look forward to working with you. I'm thrilled to have you. Some communities that I've shared with you utilize the video of their council meetings in their marketing materials, talking about how their council works. And this is the kind of community that you want to work with. This is the kind of government you want to work with. I look forward to having that opportunity to develop that marketing strategy with you moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Willett. Council, do you have any questions for the director? Mr. Kim, I think I have to answer. No questions.
You were 25 seconds old.
Mayor Bookmeyer, pulling it all about it. I'm gonna hear about it tomorrow, but...
No questions at all. I just wanted to congratulate you on the merger. I know that was no small task at all. My perspective, and I know I speak for the rest of the council, for working with you in the new year on some of these projects coming up.
Thank you. Well, we had wonderful support, as referenced in the three-year commitment, from this city government to help achieve that. Couldn't done without.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Mr. Hickey.
Yeah, I know, sitting on this floor now, I've seen a lot of excitement, not only with Mason City leaders, different community leaders, and economic leaders as well, and also Saragordo County. The thing that excites me is we got a bunch of people who want to develop not just Mason City or Clear Lake, but North Iowa as a whole. And we're all gonna be pulling together from the same end of the road trying to get these projects to come to Mason City. In the past, I know there's been some animosity or for whatever reason between Mason City and Clear Lake. And now these people have come together, working as one, trying to develop North Iowa as a whole. And I've seen this excitement. I'm impressed with the people that are on this board trying to help North Iowa. It's a great thing. So, and even like the project, I want to bring up CES. CES came looking at North Iowa as a whole. They didn't come just looking at Mason City. They also looked at Clear Lake, they looked at Saragordo County, and Mason City. And Mason City was the best fit when it was all said and done. And Clear Lake was right there. They could have had them come forward as well. There was no animosity, and they're trying also to help Mason City get this project here as well. So I think that's a great thing for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Any else? All right. Director, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I'll read that. Oh yeah, let's do that. This is, yeah, let's do public forum. Mayor, city council, comments from the public. Agenda items here. And you're asking your name, address, and agenda items, and the network you're referring to. Please keep your comments concise and written in the comments. Mr. Palmer.
Steve Palmer, 255 Lakeview Drive. I'd like to speak in support of action item number 16 tonight. And I got pretty pumped up here when the mayor was talking about 2012 and all the things that Mason City hopes to do during this year. But I know that one item that's top priority is creating and retaining jobs. The mayor alluded to that a number of times. And small businesses create most of the new jobs in this country. Always think about attracting a car company or a large warehouse, but as a matter of fact, that opportunity probably is a winner for you in itself. But every day, a small business may think about expanding or coming to Mason City. And I think that the Papa John's Center and the Business Incubator out there are great resources for our community. And we should view them as important partners in business education and job creation. And for that reason, I really urge you to support this micro enterprise program tonight. It's been around a long time. We never get the support for it. Sort of like Dave Chubb that it's back on the agenda. I'm really pleased to see that, and I urge you to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer? Oh yeah. Mr. Martinez.
Mayor. Jim Maris, 120 South Carolina Avenue, here in Mason City. As those of you who already know, I'm very much pro-growth. I'm very excited about Mason City. I think we've got a great future ahead of us. But I hate to get up here and talk, and I think it's gonna sound negative. But I do have an issue with item number 13. Propose to engage unit to the mechanism project to offer to Mason City. I'm a great believer in TIP funds, and I will see them used effectively to bring in businesses, industries, and people. I don't really want to see them used to promote unfair competition with existing businesses out. As opposed to, you know, G and I, Old American Realty Management Company, we manage properties for a lot of investors and owners, most of them Mason City people. We run almost 450 units apartments in Mason City right now. It's been a good business company here. Been doing it for a long time here. But we've had kind of a perfect storm with our community over the past few years losing several thousand people in population, losing jobs. We've had tenants leave Mason City because they couldn't find work here. We've had, because of the economy, we've had tenants move home to live with mom and dad, or mom and dad move home to live with the kids. We've had tenants actually go across the pond from each other, move in together, so they only have to pay for one apartment instead of two. I think this is going to be a temporary situation in Mason City. For the time being, the past few years, it's kicked our vacancy rate up to almost 12%. So when you do the numbers, that's a lot of apartments. There's more apartments vacant than we're talking about building. Now, expenses have gone up. Our water bills are more than double. Light has not lowered their utility bills, I guarantee you. Taxes have gone up. By the time we pay the mortgages, pay the increases in utility bills and maintenance bills, we're scrambling to have money to pay the taxes. We kick out of our office over half a million dollars in property taxes a year. It's a significant amount of money. With this kind of vacancy rate, it's hard to do. You add another 48 units into that that are being subsidized in what form? Either by the state, federal government, for rental housing, or by using TIP funds, which could be used to be bringing in industries. We'll have to come back someplace. Is that going to be in maintenance? Are we going to have to degrade our properties in order to keep a flow of paying taxes? I don't want to broaden that situation, but that's what I have to worry about. At least for the next few years. Now, with what's going on in Mason City and the new council and the pro-business attitude, I think we'll bring those people back. I'm very optimistic about it. I'd love to get up to 100% occupancy, see where I can build the gentleman, go get the noise, say, yes, please build that, we need it. But right now, I don't think we do. And I don't want to see my investors incentivized by using taxpayer money to create an unfair competition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Who else?
Mr. Shonman. My name is Brett Shonman. I live at 944 Sixth Street Southeast here in Mason City. Thank you, appreciate the city. I appreciate the work you're doing here, and I like the ownership you take of Mason City. It's contagious, so thank you very much. But on to my item 12 is, doesn't bring a whole lot of mention, but it's a small success in Mason City. I want to point it out regarding the 28B agreement between Mason City and the county for the GIS mapping program. Most people don't even use that. That GIS mapping program is a program that we can zoom in and look at who owns what, all property owners and landowners. I sell real estate residential commercial brokers, Shonman owners. And we get on in Mason City and the county from one of the most challenging sites to find out who owns what to a very, very competitive site. Representing developers coming from out of the area. A lot of times, we spend a lot of money on Chamber of Commerce, and EDC has a good welcoming program for these developers. A lot of times, they're researching our communities before they contact us. And they do that through our successor sites and through our GIS sites to see who owns what and who owns what along the busy corridors. And we have just grown leaps and bounds. The GIS program we have is a huge success. It helps real estate professionals to be creative and figure out how to relocate tenants and helping developers. So I didn't think that anybody would notice that, because I spend, I'm on that site at least daily and a lot of times at night. And I know it's not used by a whole lot of people, but it is very important. And I appreciate the money that we've spent towards that. And I think the partnership between the city and the county is another success that needs to be drawn into the light. So thank you very much, city, and good job on that.
Thank you, Shonman. Who else? 21. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and we'll read that, and then we'll give opportunity to the members of the poll. Number two. Number three. Vince, regular runs January 3, 2012. Four, claims date January 5, 2012. Five, permit. Six, mayor recommending approval of one of GMS enterprise sound commission. Number seven, administrator recommending approval of one hire, grant, equity, and authorization to opposition project weapons. E, administrator recommending approval of hire, drug supply, and burial, edification, firefighter. Nine, administrator recommending approval of resolution, lending assessments, or charges on certain properties with certification of saving the county treasurer for reflection. Ten, administrator recommending approval of resolution, recommending a high-performance rating issued to Mason City Housing Authority by HUD. We're achieving a 100% score for division management capabilities. We would applaud them very much for that achievement. Eleven, administrator recommending approval of resolution, accepting work in order to pay for construction of 2011 street pan, length, curb replacement project, number 11-1001. Twelve, administrator recommending approval of resolution, authorizing approval of 20 agreement between the city of Mason City and Saragordo County for their access and use of Saragordo County GIS data. Thirteen, administrator recommending approval of resolutions for proposed terms to be included in agreement for private development by and between the city and the acre housing development. L S A Rockford, Illinois, property located 3310, Ninth Street, Southwest. Councilmembers, do you have any ads to pull down here? Mr. Kim, 13. Any other items, folks? All right. Well, we'll entertain a motion here with the exception of number 13 on the consent agenda. If I can get a motion, a second?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Go.
So moved. Yes. Tara Quest?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Iggy?
Yes.
Maris? Yes.
All right, council. Mr. Kim, you have a motion on 13.
Motion will prove. Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kim?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions and also comments on this. And I'll look forward to getting to it. First, and I know it's gonna be a ballpark figure, but from projects that this company has done, size and scope, after this, if we were to approve this after the semi-annual TIP rebate payment, what are we looking at as far as valuation increase of doing this project?
And Ms. Mary, if I make a mistake, it needs to be available. I know it, I know it a little bit, but the number that I remember from Art Especials was around $41,000 is what their property tax bill will be at the end of the timeframe that we're looking at. When the TIP district expires, that's what they'll be paying in property taxes.
Okay. And how long has this area that they're looking at, Self-Arts, how long has that been underdeveloped?
I don't know the exact timeframe, but I know that it hasn't been five to 10 years. 10. Mark says nine years. So 10. So it's been quite a while. It was set up, and we worked with them, and we worked hard for when that district was established. And since then, I've had, we haven't had development along that street.
And all the utilities, they would be able to tie in right into everything out there?
Yes. Our utility system is good in that area, which is a plus for the particular site.
And to you and SAP as well, any, I've been out in that area, but any potential red flags as far as in people's eye line, or any particular...
I haven't really asked Pam if she has, Pam, have you had anybody come forward? I don't know if anybody's talked to you since this started, but I have not had anybody talk to me in terms of particular development.
Director Mary?
Question, if anyone has called to question the project?
As far, yeah, and I know it's fairly new, but as far as the site, I don't think we've done any other past projects, but as far as in people's eye line, other homes, other developments, any red flags we perceive for that site?
No, we haven't. We haven't had any concerns. The developer is Mr. and I, Van Thomas, so if you have any specific questions to do now, he is available.
All right. Thank you, Director. And that's all the questions I have. Just had a couple of comments as well. At first, when I saw this, the only thing that raised a question in my mind was if we have a TIP project for residential in the past. The first thing that came to mind is, and the downside to that is, we're not gonna have long-term employment if we're doing a TIP project on a manufacturing company or a company that's selling credit, or seeing increase in low block and sales tax. But the more I looked into this, I think there's more positives and definitely see a positive effect from doing that. One of the things that's throughout the campaign, I was talking to a lot of seniors and some different things out that have different assistively, or not assistively, excuse me, but senior housing facilities. And one of the things, since we've seen some development, a lot of the people that move into these areas, they're not from Mason City originally. We're bringing in people who otherwise would be living in those things, St. Anne's or Rockford. So I see a potential positive there. And also, I don't think anyone would disagree that we definitely have an aging population. So I understand some of the concerns that Mr. Maris has, but I think we do have a potential need there as we definitely have more people my parents' age than my age in the community. Not to date them at all, but I do see a potential need in the future. I'm happy that you're knocking on our door for a potential project and could see some increased valuation on our tax rolls, short-term construction jobs. And also, another thing we're not thinking about, and I think Mayor Bookmeyer alluded to it, in the state of the city, a lot of these young families are looking at, when we talk about the brain drain, bringing people back to Mason City, having some of these older people, seniors moving into a facility like this or a residence like this opens up single-family homes for people that may work here but live in smaller communities. So I definitely see some potential positives and also having salvation army out there in close proximity and transit and all the different services. So at this point, I definitely would, unless I hear some other concerns, positives as far as contributing to your application for a low-income housing tax credit application. So I think this is something we should move forward on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Who else?
Mr. Trumpquist? I have an amendment that I would like to offer for consideration. I think a corporate decision would be to make it...
Make a motion, or give a second, is a second?
I'd like to add the following, presumably the section one of the resolution. Construction contracts will be awarded to general contractors and trade subcontractors incorporated in the state of Iowa, provided said contractors are bondable and experienced in multifamily... in multifamily housing projects. The preferential consideration of Iowa contractors may be waived if the spread between the low qualified Iowa bid and any low out-of-state qualified bid exceeds 5%.
You have that written down?
I do.
Yeah, you have some, yeah.
I need a second.
Yep, we have a second on, Mr. Harquess?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Harquess on the, on the amendment?
This is not a power play. I support the development agreement whether this friendly amendment passes or not. I think the development agreement is strong. I think the motion that I propose is stronger. And in fact, I appreciate the relationship that I've had with the developer, not in person, but through Brent, our city administrator today as our conduit for communication, to make sure that the language that I proposed is mutually beneficial and nobody's getting jammed up. It is true that this would be the first time we've ever used TIP funding for a housing project. Our preference would be to do tax rebates, similar to what we did for village properties. However, that is not an option that's available to us. The only option available to us is TIP in this case. One of the things that I like very much about the project is it targets low-income seniors, and that's a demographic that's all too easy for us to forget. One thing that I think makes this strong is as we create opportunities for housing stock for this demographic, we have people moving through the system. And by virtue of movement, not only of new people into the community, but especially of people within the community into this opportunity, we create housing stock for new home, new home buyers, first-time home buyers, or people that are progressing through the system. And so we will, by default, create some opportunities for the real estate market and maybe create an opportunity for some economic activity in the community. Staff did a very good job in the write-up on pages two and three of pointing out some of the benefits, some are tangible, some are intangible. The city will help create construction jobs, gain new apartments for seniors, and offer additional housing choice in the community. Presumably, we'll create one or two jobs to manage the facility. But it occurs to me that the construction jobs are of greatest value to Mason City in the North Iowa, if they are indeed Mason City or Iowa construction jobs. If you think about it, when we have, and I see this from my profession, when we have contractors come in from out-of-state, they may very well be able to do quality work, but if their home office is out-of-state, North Iowa, Mason City loses the benefit of the corporate tax on that project. We also lose the benefit of any sales tax for materials that those contractors buy out-of-state. And arguably, people that are in-state are more likely to buy materials from the state of Iowa. And then additionally, we lose payroll taxes on those individuals. So that's a three-hit whammy for the people of Iowa. I very much support the project. I think we also need to protect the interests of the developer, and so we've kind of built in a contingency here and out for the, for the developer that if our own local contractors can't compete within 5% of somebody from out-of-state, we're not going to hold the developer to that. He deserves some recourse from being held over the barrel financially. And as I understand, we agree through the discussions with Brent Trout that 5% is an acceptable level of risk to try to stack it back for Iowa contractors. So I would, I would ask for consideration of this motion or this amendment by my colleagues. And other than that, I don't really have anything else to say about the development agreement itself, regardless of the disposition of the amendment. I support the agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for considering our proposal. Well, regarding the specific motion that you've got out, again, I do appreciate that there was some back and forth to realize that although I desire to use Iowa contractors and on our two other projects that we have going right now, one in Waterloo and one that we're starting in April in Cedar Rapids, those are Iowa contractors. So it is my desire to give preference to Iowa contractors. The one ask I would ask is, I'm looking at the dollar amount. If it were a full 5%, that would put us between $250,000 and $300,000 more. Would it be possible to consider a 2% amount? I guess I'm just saying that that's a pretty substantial amount on a project of this size. We're talking six, seven million dollar contract.
Mr. Kim?
I don't know if this is the right venue to bring that up, but I didn't, I wasn't sure exactly where that went. The concept, I certainly appreciate that you're not trying to put us over a barrel because the truth of the matter is, if we go over a certain unit cost cap dollar amount, we can't proceed with the project, the state won't even let us. So I'm just trying to guard that.
I have a lot of customers in Waterloo and Cedar Rapids, and that's more, that's central Iowa. Those locations are farther from the state borders. Makes it a little less attractive for travel from out-of-state contractors. Here in Mason City, we're 20 miles south of the Minnesota border. Makes it a lot easier for Minnesota contractors to come down here. We see it a lot more frequently. That's why this may be a little bit more interest to us than what you're accustomed to seeing with what you're doing in Waterloo, Cedar Rapids area. With respect to changing from 5% to 2%, I'd like to hear discussion from my colleagues.
All right. Anybody else? There's no reason why, why the table can't, you know, make a move? Before it says two, read back the amendment. Yeah, Diana, would you like to read? Can you read Mr. Harquess's writing?
Construction contracts will be awarded to general contractor and trade subcontractors incorporated in the state of Iowa, provided said contractors, contractors are bondable and experienced in multifamily housing projects. The preferential consideration of Iowa contractors may be waived if the spread between the low-qualified Iowa bid and any low-out-of-state qualified bid exceeds 5%.
Mr. Kim, leave it in your hand.
I'm curious, I got a question for Mr. Trout. We do this, how's this going to affect, say, for economic development if a company or corporation wants to move in the future? Well, I think the key for us is that any type of project that we're doing has different factors that enter into it. And I think part of the reason that we're looking at at least this type of loss here is that we're, we're not creating jobs. We're creating tax base, which is definitely involved, but we're not creating jobs other than one or two within a facility long-term. That's my assumption. I, so for us, trying to capture those jobs and see those trades that we have in the community cease to benefit from our expenditure of tax dollars. So we can establish any type of agreement that we want regarding this. When we look at certain projects, there are, especially manufacturing, a lot of times the machinery and equipment that are utilized in those pieces, in those factories, there are specialized pieces of equipment. A lot of times they're from New York, they're from California, they're from wherever. And so to control that type of development, requiring restrictions on out-of-state is not as easy to do because it will hamper their ability to construct their project. In this case, most of the basic items will come from, can be done by individuals from Iowa and the trades can come from Iowa. We have that capability within the state. And so that's part of the reason that we go ahead and look at something like this. As I said, this is our first TIP. This might be something that we would, for housing, and it might be something that we continue to look at when we do a large multifamily housing development. Part of that, determining the right number is something that when you look at the size of the project, is hard to know. I don't know construction and the margins that Mr. Jensen is dealing with, so I can't speak to that. And we've been doing this as we progress to get to this point in the meeting, and so that was the number that was proposed. And I think that is obviously worth a consideration, at least looking at that number and asking for reconsideration. But the competition issue that was mentioned, we know is that because individuals that build village cooperatives came from Minnesota to come down, so for us, it is a factor. And I think that's something that was simply needed addressed with them. Now, with this project, are they on reduced tax scale? Kind of like village cooperative was? I don't know the exact way to explain the formula, but they're, because of the type of projects they're in, they have a different formula for calculation of their property taxes. And I guess it'd be best for you to explain, rather than me, how it works in their development project.
Yeah, the state actually has a, when a property is financed in part with low-income housing tax credits, which will be the key financing vehicle in addition to bank loan for this project, the state sets an income approach to determine the value. And because the rents are restricted, we can only charge a certain amount for rent, and the incomes of the people who live there are also income restricted. That often lowers down the formula using the income approach to determine the value. So it's something that's prescribed by the state, which is true for all projects of this type across the state.
The one thing I do like about this project is it is going to, it would create construction, it would create jobs, it's going to create tax-based revenue for the future. I know two years ago, going out visiting with folks before the elections, even village cooperative, there is quite a few people that do move out of town into new communities for facilities like this. And I think there's opportunities from, you know, 50, 40 miles away to people just walking out of small-town life, living out their local shopping and different things that they can easily access. So I know there's some opportunity, even though Mr. Moreno is a favorite of us, that it does create some different opportunities as well. So I do like that part of the project. I guess I would like to see Iowa contractors or local contractors as well, and I'm interested to hear more discussion too on the 5% part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Ms. Silver?
Thank you for looking at the Southwest County Town, that's my lower runway. Have you, I'm going to divert us a little bit here. Any concerns with any noises from Wood Harbor or Menards in regards to this project?
I considered that. I looked at it. In fact, when we pulled into town today, the first thing I did was drive past it and roll down my windows and just kind of get a sense of it. I also sniffed the air, that's always important. So, yeah, I mean, it's something I, it's something I thought about. I don't think that it's going to be an issue for seniors. And actually, I don't think it would be an issue for multifamily. It is a sound. I mean, where I live in my single-family residence, we had a sound that's probably about that loud from a distance, and it's there certain hours of the day and it's not there at night. From Menards, frankly, our Waterloo project ironically is backed up to a Menards in Waterloo, which was just amazing when I said, gee, what's this box stores? I was looking at the aerial and sure enough, it's a Menards. We were actually accused jokingly of our crane that erected the building, but it seems like a few sets of trusses keep disappearing from the yard of Menards because it actually swung right over the parking area, the staging area. But in answer to your question, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great. Again, in regards to what Scott was referencing here, is there a certain contract position in the building of this, or the construction of this building that would, that you have concern about the 5%? Because I know there's many different areas that people work, where's the 5% an issue for you?
I, I didn't hear the first one, you say a certain contract.
I mean, like the, you know, like this line, I mean, everybody has their areas of special, you know, specialties here. Is there one of those areas that's a concern going over the 5% or?
No, not a particular area. Where we come from is we have, in the way we put together the budget, we've got X amount of dollars, and it's been reduced dramatically the last two years, dramatically, like 15% each year. And so the amount that we're allowed to spend for the project, and we have certain required amenities and finishes and so forth, that I think make it a very nice quality project. This isn't cheap housing. This is decent housing, it's not fancy, but it's decent housing. Really, just trying to get the numbers to work is the bottom line. So my, my main thrust is that I don't want to be in a position where we're forced to take a much higher price in order to use an Iowa contractor. But if it can be a competitive price, then of course, I mean, why not? Why would I not want to benefit the community? That's good all the way around. So I mean, that's, that's just where I'm coming from. And so, you know, the, I understand the concept, and we've chosen to use an Iowa contractor. But I just want to make sure that I can remain competitive, that's, that's really all I'm asking.
It's a very attractive-looking facility. Thank you for considering Mason City. I guess that's all.
I, I considered every, every city that was 25,000 and over, and this was one of the two that I came down to, the 5% that we liked. So there were several things we liked. And part of it was the fact that it's enterprise-owned and that there was a possibility for a housing TIP that we're proposing tonight. That wasn't the only reason, but that was one of the reasons. Plus, just this region, I think, has some good prospect. And frankly, I think that providing options for seniors, providing more options is really valuable, because I think a lot of times, we kind of forget and say, oh, they're taken care of, they're in the towers, whatever, that's fine, that's great. But it's still nice to have additional options, and often it will bring people in from other cities. And it will keep adult children from moving their parents to another city if they don't have options that they're satisfied with in a given city. So I think it actually can help expand the number of consumers that you've got here.
Thank you.
Ms. Silver? Mr. Williams?
Being the first TIP project I've kind of dealt with, usually you take a business expansion and jobs. Is there a full-time manager, or is there any jobs that after it's built, that go along with this project?
Yeah, we have, we have an onsite manager, and we have an onsite maintenance person. And then there's some additional things that we might sub out, we might sub out on here and kinds of that.
Two full-time jobs, basically, onsite?
That would be fair to say that. Yes, the answer's yes.
All right. In regards to the 5%, I'm a big fan of promotion of local jobs, I mean Iowa, but more importantly, locally even. And you said you had two other Iowa contractors. Were those by your choice, or were they development agreements that were similar to what we have proposed here?
It, it happens to be the same contract, two different projects where I use the same Iowa contract. And so it, your choice was by my choice. It was not required.
5%, you know, I think it's just a starting point. I wouldn't be set on that or could lower it. You said 3% to my math, and not the math guy, teacher here, but $240,000 on an eight-billion project to above 3%. Is that kind of what you said? Difference of the two to 5%? Is that right? 5% at 8 billion is?
Well, yeah, the total, yeah, we have, it would be approximately between 250 and 300, depending on where we come on.
Between 2 and 5%.
At 5%, that's correct. Because we've got other soft costs and that it wouldn't be included. The architectural costs wouldn't be required, reserves that the state requires us would not be included in that contract, the general contract number. So the majority of the costs is the general construction contract, but there's other soft costs that wouldn't be.
Just the idea of competition. I did Iowa promote the local job, but at the same time, if they can't do the job for similar costs, I would not blame the business, I guess they would go somewhere else to get it better with the price. So I would like to hear maybe others, and as of right now, it's 5%. I think it's, could, I see it as flexible between 2 and 5%. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, you still have time remaining, just from what I'm hearing, do you have any desire to make a motion to compromise someone in the middle of the community?
I would. I mean, I, I would like to maybe motion, I want to kind of hear what everybody else has said. Before I have to make a motion.
Okay, no, that's totally fine. I just want to make sure you know that you can keep that. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Reyes?
I guess I, my comment about the percentage, I think 5% is fair, but I understand too your situation and one, you said 2%, correct?
Yes.
Could we maybe go between the two and do 3.5% or 3% somewhere that we, that these compromise on it?
Is there an 1/2 cent of that over there?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Reyes, would you like? You can be one longer. Mr. Harquess, would you withdraw his motion?
Or? Could you just amend his motion?
Do we have a table? I don't know if we're really that friendly. That doesn't mean the atmosphere we can work in. You still have to follow.
Yeah, you know what, I'm going to do that. It sounds like you've got expressions from the proper to the Manhattan. And we've got, there's a lot of room for everyone to speak when we get back to the new item. If you want to follow your motion, we can go back to that, you guys can speak and then make a amendment.
Wow.
Okay. It's up to Mr. Parkquist.
I, I, I began my comments saying that I support the project regardless of the disposition of the friendly amendment, so that significantly weakens my bargaining position, and I realize that. Prior, prior to Councilman Lee's comments, I had tried to settle in at three percent. I really like the way you guys do things. I like your attitude, I like the project. With all due respect, the half percent is.
A fair half.
Three's a nice round number. But I'm a little confused procedurally. It sounds like I need a withdrawing motion.
What we've done typically, you either vote it up or down, or you, of course, remember who makes the motion as you later pull it.
Well.
Simply make a motion to change, just change.
Just pull it and make the motion.
Okay, I'll rescind my original.
You got it.
Amendment.
Yep.
And now can I make a new amendment?
Just three percent.
Yeah, it'd be the same motion, changing the five to three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Anybody? Your, your first, it's your vote.
No, I haven't.
Mr. Kim. I just had a more logistical question on the low-income housing tax credit application, and we've already kind of done it, but I was going to ask, is timeframe-wise, is, would there be a time, enough time to give with the administrator, discuss enough of it's not so, I won't use term arbitrary, but without making you negotiate right here in front of us and?
Actually, no. We're dealing, the reason it came to the agenda so quickly, and why some of these details have been worked the way they are, is the fact that he has a deadline in his fast approach. And for us not having our next meeting until February seventh, he needed to have approval from City Council tonight in order to be able to submit his application to the final demand. So we really need to approve what we want to do with this project. One comment I'll make real quick is that, one thing we should always remember when it comes to taxpayer projects, the city is asked to do some type of local contribution towards the project. It gains them points in their application when we submit some type of incentive along with the project. And we've done that in other tax credit projects in the form of land, where we've said we'll give them a piece of land. In this particular case, we don't own the land, or they want to do the project, and so therefore, this was the other alternative that was mentioned that actually gains this an even more advantageous avenue, making it successful, and it lowers the rent costs that these folks will have to pay when it comes to their success.
I would just quote saying, again, I just think I put you in a tough situation to try to bargain right up here in front of everybody, but I understand the timeframe and based on my comments before, I, I do think this is a good project, and even though we're not seeing a large increase in jobs based on TIP usage, and the valuation increase, the comments I made before about addressing the needs of our seniors, having the services out there, being by the salvation of things like that, on the transit services, I think this is a good project. I think Councilman Torrance's amendment, no matter what the percentage, makes a good deal better, so I would be fully supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Anybody else? Mr. Parkquist.
Just one closing comment, actually two. I think the community needs to understand that, I can reiterate that you're competing to get this project, and there will be more applicants than projects awarded. And quite honestly, I'll be disappointed if this is not one of the, the projects that's, that's awarded an opportunity to have anymore. And the real message that I think you've received tonight, I hope you've received, is forget about percentages and numbers. We're a community like any other in Iowa that's been struggling, and we're all Iowans, we're all Mason Cityans. This is a project in Mason City for Iowans, and we really would like to see Iowans build in the project. And I think you're sensitive to that, and not only to the level of the general contractor, but the electricians and the mechanics and every trade. We've got good Iowans that do good work, and there's no reason why Iowans can't build the project, so that's what we're hoping for. Now those companies got to go compete and be cost-effective and be good partners with you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkquist. Anybody else on the amendment?
Sir, can I speak one more word?
Yeah.
I just wanted, I appreciate that you mentioned the competitive nature of this. I mean, frankly, your investment, as I would consider it, in these TIP amount, will probably, it's about a twenty to one return that will be received in this community by way of the value of the tax credits that will be used to build this project, or I should say, used in part to build this project. So it really is a good leverage of your resources. And there's generally, I expect one in four projects submitted to be funded. The last two years, there was around sixty projects, and we were successful two times, but it's, it still is very difficult. You've got to have certain things of this nature, like the local government contribution, to be able to score high enough so that Mason City gets it instead of Ames or, you know, any other place in, in the state. So it really is competitive. I mean, I would like to think it's because of my sparkling personality, but no, no, it's not. It's just a mathematical scoring system, that's it. And so, it, it's, it's too full. The residents benefit with lower rents, and Mason City gets a project that, in my opinion, would not have a, you know, a dead leverage. I, it won't. I can just tell you that.
Mr. Parkquist, your time, Mr. Parkquist. Senator, Ms. Marinos.
I'm not sure if I should do it now or when we vote on the, the original motion, but because of the bus, the business that I'm in, which is property management and apartment management, I feel like there's a conflict of interest here for me to, to vote on this issue, so I'm going to accuse myself of both the amendment and the original motion.
Thank you, Ms. Marinos. Anybody else? Mr. Hickey.
I just want to say thank you for bringing this project forward to Mason City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? All right, we've got a motion and a second on Mr. Torrance's amendment on three percent. Ms. Black, would you like to read the motion?
Construction contracts will be awarded to general contractors and trade subcontractors incorporated in the state of Iowa. By said contractors are knowledgeable and experienced in multifamily housing projects. Preferential consideration of Iowa contractors may be waived if the spread, if the spread between the low-qualified Iowa bid and any low-out-of-state qualified bid exceeds three percent.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, for call roll.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Silver. Yes. Qun.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Marinos.
All right, thank you very much, Council on the amendment. We have a motion and a second on the table for number thirteen, now amended, as was just previously been backed up by Council. Is there any, any further commentary on this? Down here? Nope. Down here? All right. We've got a motion and a second on number fifteen, with the amendment, for call roll.
Qun.
Yes.
Parkquist.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Marinos. Stu.
Thank you very much, Council. Congratulations and good luck as you move forward, and this is a great project. Thank you very much. We've got safe travels. All right, number fourteen, Administrator recommending approval of order to authorize vacation movement right of way, Alec, located block two of section eighteen dash ninety-six dash twenty. Generally located the block founded by Eighteenth Street Southwest, South Wilson Avenue, Nineteenth Street Southwest, and South Carney Avenue, Mason City, Iowa, of course. This is on final, do we have a motion and a second?
Silver.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Silver.
Did we hear any opposition to any of this? Nothing?
Head chips. Mr. Hickey.
No comment.
All right, anybody else? All right, we've got a motion and a second, this is on final, for call roll.
Silver.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Marinos.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Qun.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. Number fifteen, orders submitting Title twelve, the city code, tipping the zoning ordinance of said city and changing the, the service district. There it is, on Z two suburban district, the Z three general urban district, four property located at twenty-six, twenty-six Nineteenth Street Southwest. This is on second. Currently, is there any motion and a second?
Silver.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Silver.
Again, this is out of my board, have we heard any negative or, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hickey.
No comment.
Thank you, anybody else?
Just one second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second for call roll.
Silver. Yes.
Yes.
Parkquist.
Yes.
Marinos.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Council. Number sixteen, Administrator and Mayor recommending approval, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of agreements in the city of Mason City and North Iowa area community college, John Papajon Center for Administration of the Micro Enterprise Program. Do we have a, Mr. Parkquist?
Move to approve the micro enterprise program, is presumed with that.
Is there the second?
Second.
Ms. Marinos. All right, Mr. Parkquist.
I want to hit a few bullet points briefly. First of all, the program has been in the works for nearly two years. The current budget cycle that we are in includes fifteen thousand in funding to establish the program. Obviously, per what we have in the packet, establishment's been revised to a ten thousand dollar cost. The budget also includes a hundred and fifty thousand set aside to provide seed money for qualified reimbursements. Reimbursement's a key word. The purpose of the program is to increase employment, increase economic activity, and reduce commercial property vacancy rates. This program has the opportunity to become another tool in the economic toolbox that specifically targets small business that has been identified in the past year, year and a half as a void in our programming. Participation in this program is voluntary. Basically, as a community, we're risking ten thousand dollars, that's the fee for establishment of the program guidelines, and it may or may not work. We don't know, we're not going to know until we try. But any disbursement over and above the initial ten thousand dollars comes from reimbursement of incremental economic activity that's been created in the community. If indeed we get to a point where we're dispersing, that means that the program's being successful, and that's a net benefit to the community. Continuation of the program is predicated on success. That is to say that the fee that the Papajon Center would collect, again, comes from incremental economic activity that's generated in the community. If that doesn't exist, there's no fee to be paid. If indeed the program doesn't work, it will therefore, therefore die in its own accord by default. Relative to financial incentives that we typically offer to generate economic development in the community, this program is low-dollar, low-risk, and has the potential for high return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkquist. Ms. Marinos, do you have the second?
Thank you, I'm very excited about the opportunity for us to partner with the Entrepreneurial Center, because I've seen some successes that they've had in the past, and as a small business owner, I see this kind of incentive for other small businesses in our community to really take part in some of the excellent opportunities that the Entrepreneurial Center has, the fast-track program, and some of the experts and, and help that they have out there for the, for businesses, I think are, are excellent, and I'm, I'm very excited about this project moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Marinos. Anybody else? Mr. Kim.
I'm very excited about this project. Probably after a lot of the comments are made by my colleagues, but there's an email that went out today about our goal-setting session, I think, January thirty, if we're looking at, and I can't speak for everyone for sure, but I have a pretty good feeling that job creation and economic development is going to be pretty high on the list, and I think if we will not be willing to put in the investment into a program like this, I, I don't think we would be able to say that's a top priority with a straight look on our face, because not only are we looking at projects that, during Willis talking about the larger industrial manufacturing, larger-scale projects that of course are an important piece to the economic development puzzle, but you can go on the internet and find numbers that that'll, that'll fit your case, but anywhere around seventy-five percent upwards of the new jobs created in, not just Mason City, not Iowa, not the, but the entire country, are entrepreneurs, small businesses that are investing capital, investing in their employees, and that's exactly what this project does, is give them some of those tools. And a lot of the first-time small business owners that are investing in their projects, a lot of times the reasons they fail is because they don't have the business experience. They don't have, and that's not no fault of their own, but they need some of that training, they need some of that capital and some of those experts to help them out, and I think we have that at the Papajon Center. And I think this is sending a message that the city of Mason City is open to do business. We do want people to come here and think that Mason City is a place where they can drill and they can expand, and we have a, a city government that's here to support them, so I thought it was a great project. Couple of items in here that I wanted to, to point out, in the participant requirements, the fourth bullet there, that significant for approved purchases of goods and/or services for Mason City businesses, I didn't know we were going to put some requirements on the project for having an Iowa contractor, but I think that's great, and I think that's the second time that this council is saying that we want to support local businesses. And here, again, we're not writing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar check to the Papajon Center and saying, do what the wish pleads with tax payers dollars, this is based on reimbursements. So I hope we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'll say that upfront, I hope in three years we come back and we talk about how great this project was, and they're coming back and asking, not saying asking for funds, they're looking for partnership on this project again, I hope it's a success. I hope we're continuing to reverse these projects, because that's money laid right out here in the agreement, it's going to be spent in our community. They can't spend it in businesses outside of Mason City, it's right here in Mason City. So I think this is a great project, that's potentially a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that wouldn't be spent. So I, I think this is a great project, I think this is, again, sending a lot of the message that Mayor Buckmeyer talked about in the State of the City, that we want to be open for business, we want to work with you, and one of the biggest things, and I don't think anyone from the Papajon Center is here tonight, but I think we need to market this, we need to get this out. If there are small businesses that are looking for assistance, talk to the Papajon Center, get out there. There's a lot of, a lot of good people out there, I know a lot of them, they do a lot of good work and help a lot of businesses. Some of the numbers that they have from July of two thousand and ten to June of two thousand and eleven, forty-two new business starts, same time period, a hundred and five new jobs created, this is out of Papajon Center, through their fast-track and different programs that they're, that they're incubator. And twenty-four businesses were assisted in attaining three point five, three point one five million in debt and equity five eighty, so again, that's money that's spent here, that's spent on capital, that's spent on potential new employees. And again, it's not silver bullet, it's not going to solve all our problems, but it's one piece of the puzzle, one more tool in the toolbox for economic development, so I think this is a, a great project, a great potential for return on investment. One last thing, a lot of times, again, don't want to refer back to the campaign, but a lot of, a lot of the questions came up about, do we need to have a hard policy about eligibility when they come to the city looking for taxes and looking for TIP and things like that? I'll say upfront, I don't recommend a policy like that. It's good, an economic decision for the city that are, that's looking to grow, all different projects are, are a different animal and looking at different incentives and have different needs, but what I think this also does, if we have a business come to us that's looking for assistance and, provided for better term, it doesn't pass the SMN test as far as with the city growing jobs, increasing our tax base, but they're still looking for assistance and need all of that capital, here's an outlet for them to go to look for those resources. I think I believe we're going to, I think this is great project and my time. Not as far as we love them.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Lee.
Again, kind of echo what I love from Sam, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic about this, maybe cautiously optimistic, I think it's a great thing that we send the man- I think it's a great thing that we send the message to, you know, again, I've talked to everybody when trying to bring jobs building from within, I have a lot of former students take, you know, take an opportunity out there. I know a lot of teachers or know people in town that have taken, done this, and I think it's done a great job. Some failures within the program itself, but there is amendment I would like to, to motion. I'd like to read that to everybody. Kind of goes in pursuit of what we just did, washing out for our investment, I guess. And I have read in here, JPEC will utilize the 10% matching funds for administrative fees from the city in direct support of the micro enterprise program. JPEC will submit a statement on July 1st and January 1st of each year accounting for the administrative expenditures in the program for review by city of Mason City staff. City staff will provide a report to the city council regarding compliance with this requirement. What I'm invested in.
We need a second here. Oh, sorry. Hold on. We got a second? And then we'll go ahead. You can talk.
The reason I get I'm looking at this is it is an investment. You know, even 10% or $10,000. And at the end of the $150,000, we will, we will give to the Papajian Center up to $15,000, even though it may seem small or whatever. I still want to make sure that $15,000 goes into a program that we're supporting and not being used on some other program. That money that we invest isn't exactly what we are trying to accomplish and not some other program that they want to initiate. So I'd like to make sure that money that we give to Papajian Center is actually utilized on the program that we are, so do direct support of.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Frankquist, you have a second on the amendment.
Yeah, I think those comments underscore the value in fresh eyes, taking a look at something. You know, I've looked at this so many times over the last year, year and a half, and I don't have any problem with the motion at all because it's exactly what the program has always intended. However, from the perspective of a new colleague, it doesn't specifically say that. So to the extent that we can clarify in the policy and remove ambiguity, I think that makes the program stronger. Indeed, the intent always has been that the 10% payback would be to continue to administer the program. Now it's written into the policy, so there can be no question.
Thank you, Mr. Frankquist. Anybody else on the amendment? Amendment. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Would you like to read the amendment here real quick?
JPEC will utilize the 10% matching funds for administrative fees from the city in direct support of the micro enterprise fund. JPEC will submit a statement on July 1st and January 1st of each year accounting for the administrative expenditures in the program for review by the city of Mason City staff. City staff will provide a report to the city council regarding compliance with this requirement.
All right, thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for call roll.
Lee.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Keen.
Yes.
Keen.
Yes.
All right. All right, we're back on number 16. And does anybody have anything? Oh, yeah, Mr. Frankquist, Ms. Marinas, and Mr. Kim speaking on that, and Mr. Lee also. Anybody before we move to response?
I hate those chairs, too. One, thanks for the amendment. I liked that. That was very good. And there's been a lot of great comments regarding this project. One of the issues we face is council members sitting at this table, and we're going to, the new council members are going to experience a way out of that, it's going through the budget. And the biggest thing that we can do in helping our budget is we collect our revenues through commercial and residential property taxes. And what we would try to do, at least in my opinion, as a new council member over the last few years, is try to change the culture. We've tried to utilize TIP to increase either jobs or increment our tax income financing. We also passed the residential property rebate taxes. And then now we're trying to help small business owners with less than 90 people, and I think that's what 70% of our businesses. So, again, we're trying to recreate a culture. We're trying to increase revenues to help offset our taxes for the future plus for job growth. And so I think we're in the right, right move here.